Please join me in bowing our heads. Father in heaven, we thank you for the many ways in which you continue to bless us. We thank you especially for the privilege that we have to live in this wonderful country, the freedom that it provides, and this beautiful city. We ask now that you be with us as we discuss issues before the city and we ask for your guidance. We ask these things in your name. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, and to one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Thank you. Now is the time for the public to make any comments impertinent to the agenda but pertinent to the commenter. And we have one named request from Assemblyman Mark Stein North. Please come forward.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, Mayor Potem. I wanted to come today and take the first advantage I've had as your newly-elected Assembly member during our first four-week district work period where I can't attend a council meeting. Unfortunately, most of the weeks I'm up in Sacramento representing you as your voice. And I wanted to just stress how important it is that we have a communication and a dialogue that goes both ways so that I can best represent the city of Loma Linda when speaking on your behalf in Sacramento. Just last week, my office conducted a community coffee, community meeting in the evening here in Loma Linda. We had a very good turnout, a very spirited discussion about a lot of issues in Sacramento and how they impact the city here in Loma Linda. And one bill specifically that just I sponsored and I proposed that was recently signed into law actually extends licensing for optometrists so that we can provide more screening to lower-income and disadvantaged communities at free of charge. Now, we know with all the challenges coming from covered California, ACA, the expansion of government, trying to look at it from the private sector approach, I think is the right way for us to be able to focus on trying to limit the scope of government whenever possible. But I just wanted to stress and let you know that I am here. My representatives have been here at every council meeting, and they will continue to be here. And please, whenever I am available to attend, I will make myself available, and my personal cellphone is open to each and every one of you. So please reach out to me. And I do want to make a special appreciation to the mayor. I serve on the Health Committee, and the mayor has made himself very available when I've had questions with some of the decisions that I've had to vote on to be able to help me with a perspective from your city and also from the hospital. So thank you very much, Mayor, for all of your assistance, and I hope you have a wonderful evening. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll be arranging a tour of Loma Linda University Medical Center for you in the middle of August, so we look forward to having you there. Are there any other comments from any other members of the public? This is your chance. You don't get 15 minutes of fame, but you get three. Okay. No takers. Then we'll move to the next item, which is the item number one, proclamation declaring September 2015 Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Is there anyone here to accept that proclamation? Looks like not. What I can do is give a very brief summary of it. Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, September 2015, is proclaimed, whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids, Cancer Connection, report cancer is the leading cause of death by disease among U.S. children, whereas one in five of our nation's children loses his or her battle with cancer. Whereas founded over 20 years ago, the American Cancer Fund for Children is dedicated to helping these children and their families, and whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids, Cancer Connection, also sponsor courageous kids' recognition award ceremonies and hospital celebrations, therefore, I declare that the month of September 2015 is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, and we will send this to the appropriate party. Next, we have some presentations. Item 2A, Ronald Espolin. Is he here? Yes. Of Willdan Engineering is retiring. He is Director of Building and Safety Services. It's an outsourced service, and we're so thankful to Willdan for providing such a depth of expertise that a small city like this could not muster on its own. So we're very thankful for that, and we're thankful to you for your leadership of that effort. You get a big plaque. The plaque says, "Ronald Espolin, Chief Building Official in recognition of 30 years of Building and Safety Service to the City of Loma Linda, 1986 to 2015." And it's well-deserved. Please come forward and receive your plaque. And let's...
Mayor and members of the council, it's been just a huge privilege for me to serve you for 30 years. I can remember when I went, I attended my first city council meeting. It was on Anderson Street where it makes the turn, and the city council chamber was just down the hall from the dry cleaners. And Pam O'Cam was the city clerk at that time, and we were just kids when, back then. And having, I still am a kid, and having served for 30 years, of course, you can't do it alone. I've had a wonderful team, some of whom are here tonight. Rich Shields, he, shortly after I started with Willdan in '85 is when I started overseeing building and safety and officially became a building official in '86. Rich Shields served the city here at City Hall on a daily basis, starting in, later in '85, '86. And my replacement is a gentleman that is similar to the age I was when I started and similar background. He's a certified building official and a licensed engineer. Patrick, if you would stand, Patrick Johnson is my replacement here. And again, I can't thank you enough. Such a wonderful city and a privilege for me to serve you in that capacity. Thank you. Thank you all.
I want to add that Ron was on the interview panel when they selected me as a public work director, so thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Thanks. We wish you a lot of happiness in your retirement. Next is Gordon Hughes, who's a member of the Budget Committee for eight years, and I believe he's not here. Is Gordon here?
No.
Okay. He gets a smaller plaque. 22 more years, he would've got a big one. And next is Carolyn Palmieri, who is here tonight. So we are pleased to recognize her service as a member of the Planning Commission for six years, and another small plaque. So please come forward. Carolyn is a lady who had a lot of passion on the Planning Commission. We appreciate your service. And you'll see, whenever that happens, we have to replace the outgoing member. So that will happen at some point in the near future. Very near. I see letters of support for some applicants. Next is item number three, presentation by Allied Telisys about Loma Linda Connected Community Program. Please.
A little bit of background, Mr. Mayor and council members. Allied Telisys is a longtime partner with the city and with the Connected Community Program. They essentially started when we started the program here and were instrumental in providing the technology, the electronics, the switches. That's one of the niches that they have cornered in the market. Some of you may be familiar with Cisco or those type of equipment. That's kind of the commercial side. These guys specialize in Internet service providers and people that do that kind of behind-the-scenes work. In the last 10 or 12 years from being a manufacturer, they have evolved into a provider and an operator of basically Internet services like we have in the city. In discussions with them over the last year, year and a half, they have approached us to join with us and essentially to operate the Connected Community Program for us. So we're pleased that there is a group that has worldwide expertise and a background and the skill and the depth to be able to do something that we, you know, we're good at city stuff, paving roads and doing city stuff. These guys are good at running Internet stuff. So the staff from Allied Telisys is here, and they would like to give a brief presentation, answer questions that you may have about their expertise and background, and then we would look for direction from council to work with Allied Telisys and to engage with them to manage the Connected Community Program for us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mayor and the council members, thank you very much for this opportunity to present ourselves. Today, we have a very distinguished former Secretary of Transportation with us. He's our advisor, and I would like to, Norma Mineta, with us today. And I just want you to know that more than that, he was the mayor of San Jose, so although actually we have some business to meet at a transportation folks tomorrow, but he was very interested to come here and see your city, and that's the reason he's with us. And I do appreciate that. I know that he's kind of nostalgic about being a mayor. I can see that. He was very edgy when you folks start having a meeting, so anyhow, I would like to...
I was wondering if he has any leverage over Caltrans? Or comments on the latest transportation bill?
Anyway, so let me, today, we, I would like to share with you the, normally, we are known as a manufacturer of equipment, but today I would like to share with you the experience we have with the service side of the business. So I just want to say briefly, this is our company. We set up this company in 1987. Today, we have over 2,000 people around the globe, and we do business in 66 countries directly plus other agents, so about 100 offices around the globe. And we have a, basically, do the support service business 24/7 in USA, Europe, and Asia. So we are really a global service company as well. And the area where we really focus these days because it's, Internet is getting so complex for most of the folks, including us too, by the way, so we basically really emphasize the support service side of the business. And with us, truly 24/7, and we say that the sun never sets with us, with Allied Telisys' support group. And this is our own network that we operate daily basis, 24 hours around the globe. And there's a section where there's an awful lot of concentration of operations in Japan. That's later on, we're going to explain that. But basically, this is us. We know how to operate the networks. We know how to operate IT business. So this is something that we would like to share with you and see what we can do with the investment you made about 10 years ago. Because you do have a fantastic investment made 10 years ago. That was, I believe it's really, although I'm clearly saying that because we saw the equipment, but really, truly, you have done the very right thing. So I would comment for your folks that have done an excellent job. Now, this is the money services we do with the U.S. military folks, and we have received about 10 years ago, the contract, direct contract from Pentagon to service all these men and women in the military services and their families. And this is being still, we're still going, and we have served, we served today close to 40,000 military folks along with their families. And they are pretty large operations. I believe that their central operation in Yokota is pretty, as big as most of the cities. I'm sure it is slightly bigger than your city, but anyway, this is where all the central command sets for the U.S. Army and the Air Force, including Marines. So this is the area where we do take care of the family needs on entertainment sides. That includes the video, voice communication back to USA, their folks, as well as the Internet access. So we have, some of the bases already, we already upgraded their service to each soldier's family or suite to gigabit service. So this is where we also maintain, depends on the services we do for each soldier, because as you know, the important thing is here that I recognize, we delivered this service, started delivering this service 10 years ago, and this, one thing it's important is the soldiers do not have lots of money. So we had to provide all these services with a very, very low cost and good reliability. As a matter of fact, this was the network we had. It was the only one was up when they had this major earthquake in Japan, and you know, everything was shut down, but our network was still going. So that was the kind of, saved a lot of emerging cases, emerging cases for the U.S. military bases. Okay? So that was the kind of service I just wanted to share with you. We do have a very extensive service. We operate ourselves with our own people. The second thing about, this is a recent thing, and there's a lot of subjects coming up lately that a lot of municipal governments has a difficulty, how to deal with this crowd, you know, you hear about the crowd operation, how do you operate your IT department? And there's always a shortage of IT folks and all that, so, and a lot of systems that they use today is becoming obsolete. So this is something we have started. I happen to live in Kyoto when I'm in Japan, so this is where, the city of Kyoto is the fourth-largest city in Japan, and it is one of the premier, as you know, lately, this, that Kyoto is classified as the best city in the world today for last, first prize, they've been winning a first prize the last couple of years, right? Anyway, so they have a, a lot of things they run. They have, they run the trains, buses, of course, and the schools and the hospitals and educational institutions. So this is, this is the area that really encompassed quite a lot. That's the reason they have 14,000 people in the city government. And this is the area that I met, I come to know the mayor of Kyoto City, and this was about three, four years ago, and we became very friendly, and he was asking me how to cut the cost. So I said, "Well, I understand that you're using a very old system, so chances are, if we modernize it, probably you can cut the cost by half. However, you're going to see a lot of resistance from their own people because they don't want to change that much." So either case is, they have employed us as an advisor to how to go from where they are today to where they should be. We've been in that service now a year and a half, and by the time we get through, basically, I believe we are proposing a kind of structure and a cost point of view, probably significant reduction in operating expenses. So that's what we do as, again, this is that, nothing to the equipment, it has a lot of third-party, third-party equipments involved in here, and a lot of people, IT people also, and with a huge budget. So this is something we are also very, very much engaged in. Okay? So this is this side of Allied Telisys, a lot of people don't know about. And a little bit more, we're going to talk about today, some of the really, a little bit more in detail what we do here. So Jennifer, our sales lady, will explain how we do this in Japan and around the globe, excuse me. Okay?
Okay. Great. Thank you, Mr. Ashima. My name is Jennifer Spooner. I'm a regional account manager with Allied Telisys in the West Coast, so I work with Conrad here in the city of Loma Linda, as well as with my colleague, Vince Cordova. So we wanted to take a little bit of a deeper dive to give you a little bit more background information on Allied Telisys and what we've done in terms of solutions for different organizations and cities. We, a large client of ours is in the, in the U.S. government. Our largest client in the U.S. is actually the federal government. We also do quite a bit internationally. We built the infrastructure for the French Post Office, and we also built the infrastructure for all of the Italian embassies globally. So we do a lot in the U.S. as well as abroad. We do quite a bit with enterprise, both small, medium, and large as well. We serve over 10,000 clients in that arena. We do quite a bit in the health, within healthcare. We have over 1,500 clients internationally, quite a bit in Japan as well. We have developed expertise in that area, and in doing so, we've been able to host a HIPAA-compliant data center, which is relevant in the city of Loma Linda, considering the amount of healthcare facilities that you guys have within the city limits. And in that data center, we have the ability to do data analytics, and we've hosted over 300,000 medical, Medicare patients in that data center as well. And I wanted to play just a little video on our healthcare solutions, our next-gen solutions that we have executed in Japan. So the video is focusing mostly on Japan, but this is something that we also do in the United States, and one example would be Dallas Medical Center.
In the early morning, these employees from Allied Telisys are arriving for an important visit with doctors at the Fukuji Hospital in Tokyo, Japan. Their meeting is only part of an enormous change in how hospitals and medical staff around the globe are using revolutionary new technology that will change the way we live. Digital devices and electronic records are revolutionizing the healthcare industry, from major surgery and patient care to communication between hospitals and pharmacies. Information technology is rapidly changing the healthcare field, and some of the best examples of this can be found in Japan, where companies like Allied Telisys have been working closely with healthcare providers to meet the demands of a changing world. With offices in over 30 locations around the world, Allied Telisys has established itself as a global leader in IT Ethernet technology. The company has built a solid reputation in the healthcare field, and their networks are widely used in hospitals and clinics throughout Japan. The Allied Telisys goal: to cure healthcare networking pains. This means non-stop networking, where failure is never an option, and a high-capacity system that can move massive amounts of data in real time. And the network must always be secure, because patient data has to be handled very carefully. At the Izawa Hospital in Masumoto, electronic medical records allow quick access to patient data. Nurses enter vital patient data like temperature and blood pressure, which immediately become part of the secure records stored on the hospital's network. One of the most significant changes in healthcare technology today involves the ability to share data on a broad scale. The Allied Telisys network allows other doctors outside the hospital, such as those at the Miriyama Clinic, to view patient records, which speeds treatment and improves accuracy. Over 120 doctors and pharmacies are on Izawa's network. At global pharmacies like this one in Masumoto, patient information can be viewed by technicians before dispensing prescriptions. In the past, a pharmacist could only guess at a patient's condition. Now, they have much more precise information and can offer sound advice when a patient has questions about what they're taking and why. There's an added benefit to the open communication that this network provides. Patients like it. They know their prescriptions are being handled carefully based on the pharmacist's knowledge of their personal record and medical history. One of the best examples of how networking technology is transforming the medical world can be found at the Fukui Hospital in Fukui, Japan. Here, you can see the full array of advanced technology solutions that are helping patients and improving medical care. Fukui is a large hospital with over 600 beds and over 30 clinical departments. Doctors are able to pull operations in the hospital simultaneously through the hospital's network. If a technician spots a problem, senior doctors can respond immediately. In any hospital, safety is priority number one. In Fukui's inpatient ward, monitoring devices linked to the network are placed on vital support equipment like this ventilator. The movement of a patient's head may dislodge the breathing tube, and if this happens, the network immediately triggers an alarm in the central nurses' station. The importance of a fully-integrated 24-by-7 network cannot be understated. From vital images and critical records to test results, tests, and prescriptions, being able to access patient data whenever it's needed is key. Consider this: you're out of the country, and suddenly you get sick. If your medical history can be quickly accessed by other hospitals, then your attending doctor can make a better and more informed decision on how to treat you. That's the model that Allied Telisys, in cooperation with a wide network of hospitals in Japan, has built. The technology solutions are there, and Allied stands ready to apply their experience to make this the standard worldwide.
Okay. That was a little bit more information on what we can do in the healthcare arena. And finally, we do quite a bit within education. We work with K through 12 as well as higher education. We've worked with a lot of large and small universities. We've worked with UCLA, my alma mater, Ohio State University, Stanford, and a large implementation that we have in the higher education arena is with San Jose State University, where we offer fiber to the pillow. We are the voice, video, and data provider for three, over 3,000 students directly to their pillow in their dormitory. And we have, I have an example, another short video, of a success story that we have in Utah with a college prep institution, and how we've been able to help them through a wired and wireless program to do things like distance and remote learning, virtual collaborations, and we'll see the rest.
On early spring morning, children of all ages come onto school at Roland Hall, one of the most prestigious college prep institutions in the country, to get ready for a busy day that will involve reading, writing, and some of the most advanced technology for classroom learning in the world. Founded in 1867, Roland Hall is Utah's oldest co-educational college prep day school. They take pride in preparing students for the rigorous of a college education, and the school's faculty has eagerly embraced technology as an important and necessary learning tool.
It's become more of a tool that's sort of like a pencil and a piece of paper and a book or a dictionary or what have you. It's just, it's just part of our, it's part of our day.
The school's students, from pre-kindergarten through high school, attend classes in multiple buildings spread between two different campuses in... buildings spread between two different campuses in Salt Lake City. At any given time, hundreds of students and their teachers are using internet-connected devices, which then has a robust Wi-Fi system that can handle the load.
And then the Wi-Fi really is that piece that makes everything happen. So you can have the greatest device and the greatest teacher, but if you don't have the connectivity aspect, everything falls apart.
Using the Allied Telisys' advanced extratom transmitter technology, the school can provide seamless coverage that stays up 24 by 7, and can handle the demands of a classroom which may have 30 devices, all needing a fast connection right now.
The tolerances for outages and things like that in elementary school are actually very low. You know, it's, it's not just an ISP getting a call.
Technology enhances learning.
The school's Wi-Fi network is even used during exercise in the school gym, as teachers rely on iPads and software tools to select exercises or quiz students on proper athletic technique.
Remember, the letter that is the correct answer, you should have that up at the top.
Coming here to Roland Hall, seeing essentially an enterprise-grade network, it was, it's pretty cool, and it definitely does help. You can tell the kids are able to get what they need a little bit quicker, and pretty much the world is at their doorstep with having the internet right there accessible to them.
Using the Allied Telisys Wi-Fi-enabled network, Roland Hall is also pioneering an innovative form of teaching known as flipped learning.
A flipped classroom model is when a teacher flips the content delivery from face-to-face direct instruction to the content being delivered through technology, typically by making a video that is in replace, replacing the lecture that the teacher may have normally given in class.
The Allied Telisys partnership with Roland Hall shows how a Wi-Fi technology solution that works can open new opportunities to reshape education and create a dynamic learning environment for teachers and students alike.
We're trying to prepare that student through Roland Hall and through the use of technology for jobs that we can't even fathom. And that's what, that's something when you think about it is daunting, but it's really exciting to be able to be a part of.
So our main goal this evening was just to give you more information to help you better understand who Allied Telisys is. We also want to give you an opportunity to ask us any questions. We have our entire executive team here tonight, so we can pretty much answer any questions that you may have. We've had a relationship with Loma Linda for about 10 years, and we look forward to continuing and helping you guys in any way that we can.
So what we're looking for, before you start your questions, is that we get direction from council to explore a relationship with Allied Telisys and to run and manage the Connected Community Program. We've invested a great deal of money, time, and energy in the infrastructure and putting the pieces in place, the conduit, the fiber. We extend, you know, we're extending up to the airport, we're across the freeway in a couple of places. We're into Redlands, we're completing the piece out to Grand Terrace. So there's a really great kernel of infrastructure. But, and as much as I like to claim we're really great guys and we know what we're doing, this is a very specific niche in this type of content delivery. And for the city to be able to really deliver the content to the businesses, to the homes, and to really make this work the way it's supposed to work, we need to bring in a professional that would then work with us on some type of a partnership, a JPA, revenue sharing, however we come to, some type of an agreement that, you know, that there is a city and Allied Telisys partnership. So if you have questions, they got the whole staff here.
Conrad, I have one for you.
Yes, sir.
If we've had a relationship with Allied Telisys for 10 years, what has, can you describe that for me and then give me some sense of a vision of what you would anticipate these negotiations will result in?
They are our hardware provider, so all of our switches, the blinking lights when you look across the hall here, they're the guys that sell that, manufacture that. They're also, because we've been so early on in adopting, we've been so creative, and we've built this, this kind of network ahead of, we've cut ground for other cities, we've been a test bed and a practice place for them as well. So we've received exceptional support as far as the technological support, as far as upgrades, having them help us through an issue when there's a problem with the equipment. You know, they have provided excellent support for us in managing that equipment. What we're looking for then is the end view, you know, when we talk about connected community, most everybody thinks about the fiber-to-the-home program. That's really a small, a small sliver of what we do. We provide fiber to the home to about 350 homes. There's fiber that's connected to about 1,200 homes, but the majority of our business is providing data, service, dark fiber to the VA, to the medical center, to the university, to other institutions in the city, and providing that backbone. That's why we have the VA building here on Redlands Boulevard, because they're using that backbone. We're providing, essentially, you know, with JARB is a real big adopter of these fiber things, the city infrastructure is running on that. So what we'd like to see is that we continue to grow this business-to-business, this commercial piece, to really let the healthcare environment and the institutional environments flourish to a point that really takes expertise to do. And then secondarily, to have, have an organization that has the financial backing and the technological expertise to complete that fiber-to-the-home concept. Right now, Loma Linda, the best you're going to get is Time Warner Cable TV and Time Warner modem, or Verizon and DSL or Dish Network, which really is not what a city like ours needs. What we're talking about is going from a FiOS-type world to a gigabit-to-the-home-type world. Something that the Google Fiber, sorry, I used that word in front of you, but something that the Google Fiber people are, you know, envisioning in some of these communities. We have the backbone to deliver that, and this is a group that can help us deliver that and help us do it in a way that, you know, we're, we have some gain out of it, and then they also have some gain as well. They say they got some good Wi-Fi, so if they can do it for a school...
How are we positioned? I mean, I'm not trying to dominate the question. I want to be sure I understand you. How are we positioned compared to other cities in the inland empire in terms of, of technology?
As far as what we provide through the Connected Community Program, we are not just in the inland empire, we are leaders statewide. People come from other cities to ask us how it's done. Especially as the, installing the fiber, putting in the microtrench, we develop those processes that are being used globally. We created that here, and we created the equipment that does that. What we hang on to the end of it and what we deliver and what the community gets, not just from us, but from Time Warner and from Verizon, is substandard to what I get in Cherry Valley, is substandard to what most of Colton gets. So we have, you know, I guess the best analogy is we got all the pots and pans in the kitchen, and we don't have anybody that knows how to cook with it.
And we would be hiring a cook here.
We would, we would not, I don't see it as hiring. I see it as...
Collaborating.
Collaborating and some type of a, you know, from one extreme, that's something we'd have to work out with them. From one extreme, they would rent our, basically lease our network from us and everything end-to-end for a fixed price, down to some profit sharing, down to some joint operation. That's something that we would need to work out with them. But what we're not looking at is paying somebody to do this for us or giving it away for free. So someplace between those two extremes is where we're, where we want to land.
And if I could ask Jennifer a question, what, this is quite an impressive evening for a little city like Loma Linda to have the Secretary of Transportation here, as well as corporate leaders in technology. What is, what is Allied Telisys looking for out of this relationship? Why would you come to our small city? I'm pleased that you're here. Don't misunderstand me, but I'm curious.
We look at Loma Linda as being incredibly progressive. We work with cities internationally and businesses internationally, and we consider Loma Linda to be one of the more progressive ones that, that's out there. And for us, we have the ability, we have so many, we're an engineering company by nature. Mr. Oshima is, is an engineer, was trained in the US, and basically, we love to build things, and if we have an opportunity to come into the city and to help you guys grow and to make it profitable for everybody, that's something that we really would be encouraged to do, for sure.
And I don't think we market adequately what we're, what we've been evolving over 10 years, let alone where we could go with your help.
Right.
So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I, excuse me, can I, as a CEO of the company, can I add something to, to what Jen told right now? Because you have a good investment already, you have done it. And however, for last, I would say, several years, I would say you could have added more services, but that, that takes capital, and that takes also expertise too. So, I mean, today, you know, because of fiber, what you have done, very few cities in the whole USA has done that, because they don't understand what really fiber can do. It's, it's really kind of misguided, misinformed. For instance, today, you talk about Google has been laying down the fiber to make a fiber city. Well, you've done before that. As a matter of fact, even one of the installations we've done the last 10 years, I think the, still the fastest network today in North America happened to be, there's a called Kent County, that's where they have spent a little bit of time for a home delivery service, so to speak, services. And they are still the number one, that was a Kent, there's a telephone, little telephone company that we install our system, and they, they are still rated as the best internet service network. So, but you've done this thing already 10 years ago, so, well, we could help you, and we can be, and what we want to do today, the cities globally, they all want to upgrade their system for the educational sake, city services, healthcare, all that is already talked about, and I'm sure you understand that too. So this is the area where I believe, because you have invested and you have a very good infrastructure, with a minimum additional investment or the fees, we can make a business out, and we, we know how to do that. And I think we can share the profit both ways, and it will be a win-win situation for both of us. And so, and we can also demonstrate, I, I, it's my pride, so to speak, I want to make your city the, one of the best, more than, I would say, shining, shining city for both of us.
Well, we're working towards the same objective, that's for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One of the, one of the biggest complaints I've had in this city is that Verizon won't bring FiOS to our town. And I get more complaints about that than anything else, you know, more than, well, since we got rid of the, rid of the red light cameras, that's the biggest complaint. But is, is that the kind of thing, you're, you're talking about the last mile or the last quarter mile to all the homes?
Well, the thing is...
That's a capital investment.
Right. But one of the things, we can provide you the best, I mean, without getting bound by one service carrier or the other, because as a city, although there is a licensing involvement and so forth, I mean, that's what we have done in, in all the bases in, in Japan or the other operating companies in, in North America. It's fundamental, we can provide the base infrastructure, then, this is basically, like, you can have your own TV, you know, antennas, I mean, TV, we call the head end, that's why we take all the TV channels, and, you know, this is the area that you can have the TV requirements as much as you, as much as you wish, as clear, high-definition or super-high-definition each home, you can be delivered. But it's the important thing, that although your population is changing, your children's are not probably looking at the TV anymore. They'll be looking at the pads or the workstation or something along the line. So again, the requirements are changing, therefore, the infrastructure has to require a little bit of modifications as well too. Okay? So, but this is something where we are looking at your, your people, your town folks, what they want, what they need, and I think we can adjust based on that. Plus the fact that you have a business going on here, therefore, the business, some of the business benefit, the profits should, can, can be utilized, I mean, can be used by your residents here in the, in the, in the city. So it's a both ways, I believe. Okay? And also, this is even more important, I think your folks done a fantastic job, is you're trying to hook in, bring, hook into the neighboring cities. Now, that's a big asset, because you can share a lot of services with the neighboring town, town and cities. So this is something that I think you have done very, very clever planning, and I think the, the result we can bring to you, and it's easier for us to show what can be done for the, and we can make a roadmap for you. Okay?
My next question is possibly for Conrad and possibly for the city attorney. What would be the impact of this on our indebtedness to the former RDA that's now known as Jerry Brown?
We, we've done some work with our RDA attorney, Mr. Hipsh, and his, his opinion is that, according to the DOF, we own the network, we own the infrastructure, they own the debt, and there's an obligation for us to pay off the debt as funds become available, the nebulous term that we had adjudicated with them. So there's, there should not be an issue with, with us managing and how we manage our asset in any way we can, as long as we do recognize that debt to the state. Is that clear enough?
So any quote profit sharing would defray that debt before it would accrue to our general fund?
That is correct. It would accrue to that debt, and, you know, one of our goals is, is to manage our, you know, our net revenue, not our gross revenue, to a point that it's favorable to us.
And just out of curiosity, without going into many specifics, when do we anticipate we ever going to get that type of revenue that is actually going to flow into the city funds rather than, correct me if I'm wrong, right now, the way it works, any revenue we generate is pretty much paying for the IT services and not really generating coming money to the city fund, correct?
Actually, it's, it's a nebulous mix. Our city IT services are bundled into the connected community costs. We don't have a, an IT budget line per se. However, we do, and I believe this year it was about $100,000, subsidize the Connected Community Fund to that amount to provide those services. If we really had to break out the guys' time and the work they do, Connected Community does subsidize the city to some extent.
And just maybe go back to the company, but I have more specific questions. Is, is the goal to improve the internet service to our institutions and offer a viable alternative to what they're using? Or furthermore, is the goal to provide people with more choices other than what they have? Right? I mean, a lot of people wanted our internet, but we weren't able to afford to hook it up to their houses. Is this company entertaining that idea? Or is it just selling us the equipment to upgrade our systems?
No, it's, they're, the answer is yes and yes. It is to up, for us to be able to upgrade what we provide to the institutions, at the same time to, you know, to speak to Mayor Riggsby's question, it is to provide a FiOS-type service to the residents, so that there is a, first, full bandwidth, and then internet and telephone, and some video component, however that's shaped, so that it becomes a commercial, a commercial product and a consumer product.
So do we have some indication as to whether, not only offering the option, but the option being less expensive than we already, what people already have? Or are they going to end up being more expensive than what the options that we have now?
The initial numbers that I've seen is that it will be highly competitive, depending on, and it, it would be then a three-player competitive market. We would have to compete against Verizon and Time Warner, which then would drive price and service.
So...
One of the service things we do now, if you call for service before noon... You know, one of the service things we do now, if you call for service before noon, we will have you turned on that day.
And if my understanding is correct, we're providing good services to our institutions for significant savings, and entering into a partnership like this would not diminish those savings, hopefully.
We, we need to support the institutions that create what we have here in the city. You know, one of the things that Taki and Jennifer really kind of brushed over a little bit, Allied is a major player in the healthcare world. And to be able to work in a community where, you know, for every four houses, there's a hospital bed, and, and a city like this, to provide that infrastructure to those institutions is a place for them to put that dot on the map and really shine.
I confess, I'm a little surprised that we don't have representatives from VA, the university, as well as the medical center here lobbying for us to giddy up and make this happen. Are they aware of the negotiations that-
We have, we have not discussed with them. This is purely direction from you to tell me to start talking to these guys for real, because then we can start showing them, our, our financials, they can start sharing their pro formas with us, and we can really start talking about what is really possible. The, you know, the, the big pieces, we've, we've talked about, you know, the service provided, the pieces that we have to negotiate and keep intact is the existing level of service at the existing price structure to the institutions. That's vital for all the institutions we have to, to be competitive and stay here. And secondly, for us to continue to manage the city services, which are, you know, deeply embedded and entwined into, you know, from every traffic signal to the sewer pumps, to the, you know, the fire radios are imbind and, and embedded in this, that we have to make sure, stay within our control or being, are able to be managed.
If, if you authorize to work with them, what we'll do is to draft an agreement that will come back to the council again for you for review and approval. And, and, and that was, that here.
And then I just have one legal question. Since we're talking about a public entity entering into a possible partnership with a private entity, are there any requirements that forces us to look at a bidding process? Or do we have the option of negotiating with whoever we want?
Well, at this point, I think we, we can go forward with this negotiation. It's to, I'm not sure exactly what form it will take at this point, but I'm not aware of any, depending upon how it's structured, I don't think we'd have to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd like to mention that Mr. Manetta is probably the highest ranking civilian ever to enter this building. He was also the, the Secretary of Commerce under two different presidents, under two, in two different parties. So, that's an amazing accomplishment. Most of us tick off everybody on the other side, so you must have good, good skills.
Commerce.
Yeah. Well, he was both, transportation and commerce, under different presidents.
So, he can now sell the process too? Let him talk a little bit about Allied.
He's not only the highest ranking, probably the smartest guy that's been in this room now too.
Yeah. And to quote another politician, "I can see your technology in my house." I have the Connected Communities Program, and I see your equipment in, in a, in a little cubby hole in my, in my closet. It's worked flawlessly for years, so I think they've got their act together. What's, what's the pleasure of the-
I see no problem with this moving forward. And I actually, it, it's exciting to even look at this opportunity. I mean, Conrad and I have talked about this for, ever since I'm on the council, and we've actually approached other companies to look at our network and look into investing, partnering with us. And so far, it sounds like you're the only ones that saw the opportunity, and everyone else felt that they were going to go their own way. So, it's exciting, it's an opportunity. And I agree that, I mean, the future is definitely changing. I mean, we're moving away from the traditional way people watch TV. And if you look at the way things are moving with Apple and Google and all the services they're going to offer, and it's just going to get even more complex as you're able to do many, many things on your television that you cannot do at the moment. So, it is important to have as much data as you can, be able to get into your house as quickly as possible, and have that option without paying for much money. So, I think it's good, it's worthwhile to look into partnering up with a private company to really improve the service, and we're excited about it. So, I'm very much in favor of it.
I'll second the motion.
Okay.
That was a motion? I guess you wanted to vote?
Does it, does it require an action or just instruction to, direction to, to staff?
There, there's no final action tonight, but you can, by-
Common consensus.
-census indicate your direction to go forward to bring back with specific proposals.
Another quick question from a legal perspective. If this kind of can be construed as real property, does that mean that maybe some of the details can be worked out in closed session? Or does it have to all be in open session as far as the negotiation portion of it and updates?
It probably doesn't fall in the realm of real property negotiations.
Okay. So, we have to rely on staff to do the right work, and then we just approve it in an open session?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I can certainly support the action, so. I think, I think that's unanimous. So, yes, have fun.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome to stay for the rest of our city council meeting, by the way.
Yeah. The next item will give you an indication of how exciting it can be. As we're ready for our public hearing on Councilville R-2015-29, Determining Costs Related to Our Weed Abatement Program. It's an annual recurring event.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Again, I'm here to present the weed abatement program. I'm sure that all of us with the same color hair would wish that the seasons don't pass as quickly as they do, but I'm here to present the spring results and documentation of the 2015 spring weed abatement. I'll go over, you have the packet in front of you that kind of goes through our standard letter that we, our weed abatement letter that initially sent out, the documentation that follows on how our contractor takes care of the weeds, and ultimately, the number of invoices that were not paid. We start the process this, in the, in the spring of this year, March 24th, we inspected 440 properties. Notices for 248 of those properties were sent out to the owner of record that we get by law from the county assessor's office. They are given two weeks to take care of the abatement. Many times, folks that can't meet it in that time call us, and they get an extension if they need it. By April 16th, Jim starts his second round of inspections to find out which properties have not been abated. And by April 23rd through June 1st, the parcels are abated by the contractor. July 30th, as you can see, we send out the invoices to the owners of record. And by July 28th, here we are this evening, that we have 24 outstanding invoices that, again, I would recommend and ask that the council approve the report and accounting of costs and adopt the accompanying resolution establishing liens and assessments on those properties. So, any questions you have, gladly to answer.
It's about the same group we see every season, isn't it?
The same group. And if you look at some of those numbers there, if you think, think about a, if you owned a piece of property and it was full of weeds, or combustible weeds that had to be dealt with, in our town here, we're very fortunate that the contractor lives in the town, so his fees are minimal.
Yeah, this is, this is a smoking bargain compared to pricing it yourself, so if I had a weed patch, I'd pay you every year.
Absolutely.
It's a good deal.
Yeah.
And I have no qualms about supporting this, but we have to have a public hearing. Are there any questions before we start the public hearing?
What's our collection rate? Are we able to collect on all of these, or?
We just attach, it's an assessment of the property thing.
That's right. So, I guess we've got a pretty good collection.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. So, we'll open the public hearing. Come forward, all who choose to speak on this topic. No takers, close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the council?
Move the item?
Is there any discussion? Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, no? It's unanimous, you have an approval.
Just a quick question. Do you notice any more dry big grass as a result of the water conservation efforts of some of our residents?
Jim could answer that better, but no, the typical, the 440 properties, this year's a few more, but it's pretty similar year by year. And, and as we've seen, this, this same, in, in general, this same group of folks choose to go that way and use our services.
Thank you.
And the rest of them would if they knew the price.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number five, public hearing, time extension request on a PPD.
This is a time extension request, PPD 13, 0007, James Bond, I guess. Tentative track map and a variant, this is for the 87 unit apartment complex off of Van Louven. The 13 designator means that this was approved in 2013. Their time has run out, and they are asking for a one-year extension. They've had the project on the market, had a couple of people fall through. Right now, they feel that they do have a, they're an escrow and have a legitimate buyer that will build the project as, as designed. Typically, the extensions are, are granted as long as there is no substantial change to either the project or to the underlying conditions of the community surrounding the project, which is not the case in either, either of those. The area, the community, the zoning and the uses is not changed, and they have not submitted any changes to the project.
I'm okay with this, but when it, when in the, under the analysis, it says that they're asking for the extension due to market and financing conditions, I don't think it's going to get much better, at least the financing conditions are. So, I'm, I'm asking, I'm questioning, what is it they expect to improve in order to be able to make this project happen?
Well, this was approved in 2013, kind of the tail end of the recession, so they, they had some finance issues going into that. They've had a couple of offers in on it, they were an escrow at one time, and they feel that, you know, the, the market conditions are improving, and that there is, you know, the ability to get a buyer, that, you know, they're an escrow with now, that's able to follow through on that. So, you know, I guess, I guess that's a subjective measure.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, we're ready for the public hearing. I'll open it. Come forward, your comments? Okay, no one, I'll close the public hearing. What's your pleasure?
Move the item?
Okay, any discussion? Okay, those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no? It's unanimous, that's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. The consent calendar, are there any items you'd like to pull for discussion?
Just question on, I'm trying to find it here on my, item number 11. Do we, is that an item that we need to draw straws on, or is that okay?
No, this is, we, we, we'll hire a contractor to help us with the, the engineering, I mean, the, the fire, plant checking services and inspection services to the institution. You don't have anything to do with institution. You just award a contract to Dennis Grubbs.
I see. Okay, so it's in a contract entering with this company, not directly with the university?
Okay. That answers your question?
I, I think, I just wanted to make sure that it was an item we needed to recuse ourselves from. Okay, thank you.
And then, well, can we consider your agreement with that to be a motion on-
Yeah, I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay. Dueling seconds. Any discussion? Okay, those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, no? The ayes have it, it wins unanimously, it's passed. Item number 15, committee, commission appointments. We'll start with the budget committee. There's one absent, one opening.
We have one opening, and we have one applicant, and the applicant is here tonight, Mrs. Jim Walling, so.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with Mr. Walling being on the committee. My question is, I noticed that he does live in Beaumont. I'm just curious, do we have a policy regarding committee members being residents of the city of Loma Linda?
For this particular one, because being a budget, we are looking for a person with expertise in finance and accounting, so.
Yeah, and he's had a little bit of experience with banking.
Few years.
I, I move, we put Mr. Walling on the budget committee?
Any discussion? Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
You, opposed, no? You have a unanimous appointment to the budget committee. Welcome. As, as one of the liaisons, I look forward to benefiting from your expertise.
Most secretive, and it's one of the best, one saving around, and so, it is an honor to be making a small part of it.
Yeah. And it's probably the only place outside of a bank where you get to run your fingers through $10 million of money.
You've done that, I haven't.
That's our, that's our reserve fund, so, yes. Next is the planning commission. We have one vacancy.
And we have two applicants, and they both are here tonight. So, Scott, Mrs. Scott Stockdale, and Mr. Dory Morgan, they're both here tonight.
So, shall we just do them in that order and have them? Do you, do you guys have a personal statement, or do you want to come up and be subject to grilling, or how do you?
I vote for the grilling.
So, council members, what would you like to do?
Take them in that order.
Okay, Scott, come forward.
Just curious as to why you want to be on the planning commission?
Well, I've been a member of this community on and off since 1954. My business is real estate, and I have a vested income, vested interest in how projects are developed, how, from a consumer standpoint, and from a, a concerned citizen standpoint. So, I'm, there's a lot of development that will take place in the next 10 years on Loma Linda, and I'd like to be part of that.
Is there, is there anything that, any concern?
Turn on the microphone. Is there anything of any concern to you right now as far as current development or proposed future development that we know of or that you know of? Do you see anything as far as a direction that you agree with or don't agree with?
I, I don't see anything going off track from, from where the city has positioned itself in terms of development. And, you know, you see things coming down the pipeline for residential, commercial, institutional. And, like I said, I like to be part of the decision-making process from the community standpoint for just an advisory position to make sure that what is proposed meets aesthetic, common sense, as well as to have input that requirements aren't overly onerous from a city standpoint as well.
Do you know any of the other members of the planning commission?
No, I do not.
Have you made an effort to contact them to find out anything about the projects that are pending?
No, I have not.
Have you talked with anyone in the planning department about what you're getting into and what's coming down the pipeline for your consideration?
Just briefly, I talked to Jeff Peterson, and just- Just briefly, I talked to Jeff Peterson, and just asked him what it was that the planning commission members do, and also talked to Conrad as to what was, what's expected and, and what the process is.
So if I can, and please correct me if I got this wrong, in response to Councilman Papesku, you want to be involved in the community, and this seems like an interesting pathway to go. Was, did I get your answer correct, or was there something I missed?
No, that's correct.
Okay. Do you have any particular philosophy or orientation to the, to structures and colors and bicycle paths or hiking paths, or can you give me some sense of what kind of priorities you would bring to the role?
So I see La Malinda as a unique city, and we, we're not Redlands, although sometimes we try to be Redlands. We're not any other community. And so we're developing our town as we can best our citizens, the people that utilize our services. And in terms of color schemes, no. I, I think that what developers do when they present projects is to do the best that they can do from a consumer's point of view, so that they can sell what they develop, whether it is for leasing or for sale. So I think developers put a lot of time and money into, into doing that. And the citizen needs to be able to have an appreciation for what they do. And, and as a citizen, if it looks like it's going off track, and, you know, we're seeing purples and greens and, and pinks in, in areas that it just doesn't fit, then obviously, I think that's where the judgment comes into play. And in terms of bike paths, and I know Redlands has done a lot of that. They've had some of the funds to do that. I don't know if that particular thing is something that La Malinda is, is wanting to expand on, but the citizens of La Malinda are, they, they need a voice, and I think that's the planning commission.
Have you, can you identify any recent buildings or projects in the city that you like, that you feel are good models of what you would like to be part of working towards?
Well, the most recent building in La Malinda for commercial has been the project, the Stewart project at
Mountain View.
Bar Road. And what seems to have been well accepted is the Starbucks. The other restaurants, not as much. The Walmart, I think that the Walmart has been a success for part of the community. So I think part of that development is done well, and part of it hasn't.
Would you like to see more developments like that?
I'd like to see something a little bit more upscale for, for La Malinda, if it's possible from an economic standpoint. If we can attract that type of development, I think that would be fantastic. If we could get a high-end vegetarian restaurant in, I think that would be something that would serve our community.
Regardless of how this plays out tonight, thank you for volunteering to join our city and be of service.
Thank you.
Just have a couple more questions. In relation to your application, you've been a real estate agent in La Malinda for how long now, here in La Malinda? 10 years?
Well, I've had my broker's license since 1990. I purchased University Realty about six years ago.
Oh, okay.
And so as a full-time owner, operator of that business.
What would you state is the, not to be, no pun intended, the state of our real estate market right now in La Malinda? Is there shortage of homes, or is there surplus, meaning on the market?
So I think throughout this whole recession, where we've had the prices run up, the prices drop, and the prices come back up, we've seen a huge difference in inventory. And we've gone from a very high inventory of 2010 to what I would consider a pretty average inventory right now. So we're running 30, 40 homes inventory. So if houses are priced correctly, they sell. If they're priced too high, they don't. There is a high demand for housing in La Malinda.
Now, you do realize that the planning commission position is a different caliber than any of our other committees, in the sense that you're almost, it's a fairly important position because you're the first line of approval for a project. So I'm sure you read in the paper, there's, you know, sometimes it's controversial projects, and planning commissions are, are asked by the press, you know, questions depending on the project. So theoretically speaking, I'm just curious, and don't read this the wrong way, but if you were to approve a project, and you were one of the persons who was a strong advocate of it, and the press would come up to you and ask you, you just approved this 500 square home, would, would you say to a community member who believes that you might indirectly benefit because now you have more inventory to sell as a real estate agent? How would you answer that?
Conflict of interest. So I would say that, yes, that is my business, but that's, there's also hundreds and hundreds of agents and dozens of agencies in this end of the valley who would also benefit. I think that the bigger question is that, do we need those homes? And I think the market decides that.
Okay, thank you.
Just, just a couple of things real quick. I, I'm just kind of curious. You mentioned Redlands and not being like Redlands, and said sometimes we try to be like Redlands. I'm, I'm just curious, do you, what, what are those things where you think we're, we're trying to be like Redlands? I mean, and it may not be us, maybe other people in the city, but I'm just kind of curious.
I think of all the towns in this end of the valley that I hear La Malinda compared to is Redlands. And I think part of it is because, and it's in my business arena primarily, and it's because we have our South Hill homes, and the Redlands has their South Hills homes. And my customers tend to choose back and forth between living in La Malinda, in South La Malinda, or South Redlands, or, so I think that that's part of the comparison that I hear a lot.
Okay, my question, and just to declare our affiliation, you are the agent who listed and sold the property that I built my house on. So I thank you for that. It's turned out well. My question is, you said there are about 30 or 40 inventory in town. About how many on average do you list or participate in the sale of?
I would say that we do probably 20% of the sales and listings in La Malinda.
So as the listing and the sales agent, or, or you do more listings than sales, or how do you? I mean, more listings than?
Okay, so it depends on the market. So two, three years ago, we were doing far more sales than we were doing listings, and, and right now, we're doing more listings than sales. So it just ebbs and flows.
So you may have five to 10 listings at any given time in town?
Yeah, well, but we list outside of La Malinda, so yeah, so we might have 25, 25 listings at any given time.
Yeah. My question is probably for the city attorney, is when we, as city councilmen, live within 500 feet of a property affected by some action we take, we are required to recuse ourselves. My question is, would someone who has a vested interest in, in a property within 500 feet of any project under consideration by the planning commission, would he be recusing himself 95% of the time?
Well, the Political Reform Act generally refers to ownership interests, but there can be other interests. If there were a listing agreement and a particular decision would be necessary to closing a sale or something of that nature, there could be conflicts of interest that could occur. And so we'd have to look at all those on a case-by-case basis. The rules are a little bit complicated, and we'd need to go through a little training process and make sure that we're aware of when we need to take a closer look.
But if he has, you know, a dozen listings in town, it's hard to imagine that being more than 500 feet from anything. Does the 500 feet even matter?
Well, the 500-foot rule relates directly to ownership interests. The, the other types of conflicts that I, that I'd mentioned may or may not be present in a particular situation where the market value of a listing would not change. So it's something we, we need to look at on a case-by-case basis and be aware of potential for conflicts, but it would not rise to the same level as if he had actually owned properties all throughout the city.
Okay. Okay. Does anybody have any other questions? Okay, if not, then you can be seated, and we'll ask Dory to come forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to apply for this position. Would you like me to say a little bit about the reason behind my application?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, awesome. I've lived in La Malinda for close to 40 years and love the city. My husband and I own our home. I am not a realtor. I am not a developer. I do not have a conflict of interest. Years ago, when my children were at Brenmore Elementary, there was an opening in the Park and Recreation Committee, and I applied, and I was accepted, and have been on that committee for many years. One of the reasons I wanted to be on that committee was, years ago, when my son was young, we were out walking on Mountain View, and a sheriff saved our life. There was a car with gangsters in it driving up to Holder Crooks Park, and they turned around, and I knew I would be dying that day. And it just still chokes me up. It was quite emotional. I wanted to play a part in the city in a way to protect our citizens, protect our children. And I was able to play a small part in park meetings where there was a suggestion to have a skateboard park by Holder Crooks Park a few years ago. Was able to counter that. I think it would have put kids at risk, families at risk, and law enforcement also. There was no way to protect law enforcement as they police that arena. There would be cameras, but, so you could see what happened, but you couldn't prevent it. So I have a very important part of my, my soul that wants to protect people in this community. And, and that includes how and where buildings and commercial centers are built also. So that is one reason. The other is just that I love this community, and I want to give back. I enjoy giving back. I am a supervisor in health education at Kaiser Permanente in Fontana, and healthy living, healthy lifestyle goes hand in hand with community life. So my efforts in working with the park committee, we've been able to create new parks, keep them updated, and encourage families to play, spend time together, and be safe. Questions?
Yeah, you didn't mention that on the Parks and Recreation Committee, you should have received hazard pay for, for helping us work our way through the Pony League versus the Little League. That was
That was entertaining.
That was tougher, yeah.
That was entertaining. But in my, my job at Kaiser Permanente, we have four unions in our department, so I should have received a lot of hazard pay.
There you go.
Yeah.
Let me ask you the same question I asked earlier, and that is, tell me what developments or buildings you see that are recent that you think have enhanced our city?
I agree with the last applicant, that the building with the Walmart and the coffee shop and Waba Grill and Chase Bank have brought a lot of commerce to our city. And one of the FOCI I would like to bring to the commission is to attract more commerce. We need the tax dollars desperately, but to bring it in a way where it fits with our city. And our city is different from cities surrounding us. I earned my master's degree at La Malinda University. Our city is one with a focus on healthcare and education, not so much entertainment, but very family-focused, with a strong emphasis on faith, too, a diverse face. So I would like more commerce. I would, I'm a team player, and what I will do is network with other people in the community, of course, with other members of the planning commission. I spoke briefly with Jarb about the planning commission. I know Ryan Galant on the commission. I know that there is some work involved, and I'm very eager to get my hands in and, and learn what the issues are. Before this meeting, I went online and took a look at some of the past agendas and meeting minutes, so I have an idea of what takes place in these meetings.
When I ran for city council, you know, we put together material kind of as a platform, and one of the things I tried to articulate were what I'd like to see happen in our city that I thought would improve and enhance it. Do you have any such vision of what you'd like to see evolve here? Commerce, I understand.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else?
If possible, I would like to see the hills kept for athletic endeavors for walking and hiking and horseback riding and cycling and off-roading. I think that's one of the diamonds of our community. I think that with this, with, our city's small. We only have so many miles, so we need to be very careful in where we spend. I cannot think of anything other than just commerce. I like the idea of an upscale vegetarian restaurant, but I'm not certain we have a large enough population here to support that. It seems that other communities are drawing more of those restaurants and commerce centers, but I think that would be amazing.
I'll ask just one more question. If, you mentioned the South Hills, which is a hot topic in La Malinda for a long time now.
Right.
There are people that own their property that would like to develop it in ways that you may find attractive and others that you may not like. How would you evaluate or engage with an applicant that had a, a own property? He invested in our city and was willing to comply with regulations, but you may have some other troubles with what was being proposed. How would you handle that?
Find common ground. Look for compromise. They own the land, so that's a, a done deal, but there must be some way to compromise where there's still green space, and, and individuals who don't live in that area can still take advantage of the activities that one can do in the hills.
And as I mentioned to Mr. Stockdale, thank you for taking the risks of coming and visiting with us and volunteering to be part of your community. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity.
Follow-up. He asked you about projects that you liked, and you both focused on commercial, but if you were to look at, and we haven't had any for a while, but if you were to look at residential projects, were there ones that you could say, I don't like, and there are ones that you can say, I like more of this? If you were to identify those areas, could you give us a sense of which ones?
Okay. The homes near that border Mountain View and Mission, they're very tightly spaced. And I think for some individuals, some residents, that's not a place where they'd like to live with such tight space, but others appreciate that and enjoy But others appreciate that and enjoy that. And the amenities, the basketball courts and very close to some of the commercial areas available. So there's some walking, a walkable, livable community to some extent. That's helpful. What I would like to see is more efforts to minimize water use. We're in the midst of a horrible drought. Through the years I've lived here, we've had droughts regularly. And perhaps for new buildings that we consider desert scape for the front yards to minimize water use, I think that would be helpful.
How familiar are you with Measure V?
Not at all.
So you haven't... Okay. So then you wouldn't know about traffic requirements or minimum lot sizes or anything like that?
No.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else?
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
That's it, thank you.
Do you want to ask any more questions of anybody or would someone... How should we handle this? I always kind of dread having someone nominate one and have someone vote no. There's got to be a better way than voting no on somebody because I like both of the applicants. I don't want to vote no on either one of them.
Well, just recuse yourself from voting.
But there's got to be a better way than motion, second and eyes and nays.
Why don't you just ask who we each support and then...
Yeah, go from there. I think that would be better. Who we support as opposed to who we oppose, because I don't oppose either one. I think they both do a great job.
And I agree, I think both would make a fine selection. One of my thoughts in looking at the Planning Commission and the makeup of it is sadly, our whole government system has been so dominated by males and we just lost the female planning commission. Part of me feels that it's always good to have a mix. So in weighing the two, I would kind of lean in that direction. And I hate to sound sexist, but I think that there's... Having the female's perspective and how to view the community and address it from a mother's point of view has just a little different feel to it. And I think there's some value to that. You know, having said that, I'm personally in favor of going for our last applicant.
Step right up.
I actually find it kind of hard to choose two. Both applicants have been involved here in the city for a while. The first being part of the chamber for a number of years. The second actually also being involved in issues with the city before. I understand you testified on a stop sign issue at one point and so you've been directly involved in a lot of city issues. For me, it just kind of comes down to between the two. One's lived here longer and kind of been involved longer and probably deserves the shot first. And I would go for Dory. If there was two positions, I would pick both of them, so I would support Dory.
I think both interviewed well. Asked some tough questions and as I said, I appreciate you taking chances when you come in here. We all take chances to do this kind of work and it's a privilege to do it. I would support Dory primarily because we've worked together on Parks and Recreation and you've been a long-term resident and so I think you've earned the right and have the passion. You don't get out of...
No, I don't need to get out of it. Happy to welcome you on the Planning Commission because you got three votes. I have a... Whoever doesn't make it would be certainly welcome to apply for the next opening and these come up about every two or three years. So I have a longer relationship with Scott and I'm going to support Scott. So you have your one vote and she has the three. And I think let's welcome Dory onto the Planning Commission. And do we have to have a formal vote or we can just do it however we feel like it?
Well, I think as chair, you may consider those to be votes and declare the winner accordingly.
Yes, and welcome. And Scott, come back next time.
I'm sorry to say goodbye to Dory from our park committee.
Maybe they can flip sides and she can go back. He can go start at Parks and work his way.
So she won't be on Parks and Rec... Can I change my vote?
Okay. Next item is new business, council bill R-2015-30, Measure I, five-year capital improvement program. This is something you update every year?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the Measure I, which is the Habsinaw Tax that even though the county CDB... I mean, Sandback said five-year CIP, but we should present it every year. So really what we're looking at is current year and what we plan for the next four years can be changed. This is the estimate revenue from Measure I from Sandback and it based on the populations. So what highlighted for the city of La Malinda, our population is about 1.55% of the valley subarea, okay? So for us, for this fiscal year, we will get approximately $365,000. For next year is about $376,000, '17, '18 about $388,000 and '18, '19 about $402,000. And for the fiscal year '19, '20 is $417,000. So this is the revenue. And the Measure I, we can use for the transportation projects. So it's just one, you know... This local pass-through funding is equal to 20% of the total Measure I collected. So that's mean that the remaining 8% Sandback can use it for transportation project, like the freeway projects, the Amitran train and so forth.
And toll roads.
So that is the board, Sandback Board decision to how much they want to spend on which project and so forth. This map show the street improvement that we have completed this past 10 years from 2005, fiscal year '05, '06 to 2014, '15. This past two years, we have been concentrated on Stewart Street. You know, we spent close to $80,000 of Measure I on Stewart Street. But we did manage to pave a couple of projects last fiscal year, which is the Mountain View Avenue from Barton to Lawton and Barton Road from the bridge crossing the railroad track all the way to city boundary at the San Tito Canyon Road. That was this last fiscal year project. And we did finish a couple of the sidewalk project along Lawton and a couple other sidewalk project that we used Measure I for. And this past foot, in addition to that, we did a couple of traffic signal, which is one at Stewart Street and Anderson, Stewart Street and Campus. And but we have a benefit of the Holiday Inn Express for the traffic signal at the Poplar Street and Redlands Boulevard. So that was a project for last fiscal year. And I have been here 14 years now and I pretty much paved every street in town, some of them twice.
Jarb, I had a question that's not related to this, but indirectly. Of course, you're, I'm sure, aware of the recent storms we've had and the problems we've had over at, on the I-10 that the bridge fell apart. I know we're not always responsible for all the bridges that go over, some of our washes, but how often does our city crew inspect some of these bridges following these large storms?
As a matter of fact, Caltrans is responsible for inspecting every bridges. And they do inspect every, I think every two years they inspect and they come out.
So they're not really coming after each storm to look at them?
No, no, but we do inspect it myself, so...
So our staff goes by just to see?
Yes, yes. Prior to the storm and after the storm, we double-check our infrastructures.
Thank you.
Now, for the next five years, including this fiscal year, earlier tonight, you just awarded a contract for pavement rehabilitation along the street, which is in pink here, Mountain View from Lawton to Beaumont, Lawton from Mountain View to Whittier, Whittier from the railroad track down to Beaumont, Brenmore from Beaumont to Lawton, Hinckley from Mountain View to Brenmore and the Caudessac Laco Court and I can't remember the other one. La Sanao Court. And because the bid came in so well...
It's in front of the home of the former mayor.
And the home of current councilman too, so... But the bid came in very well, below my cost estimate and a good unit price. So I think we can do additional street within, adjacent to that Lawton and Whittier here. The goal is to get this street paved before the Brenmore School opened for this coming fiscal, I mean fiscal school year, this school year. So I think it's open in late August, so I want to get this done quickly.
So the whole project, all of the purple, will be completed when?
I'm hoping probably early September. It doesn't take very long.
It's not just Brenmore you're talking about?
No, sir, there's all this. They come in within a couple of weeks to get them all done. We have a little piece of Brenmore Street north of Redlands Boulevard here. This is a project that we will be working with the contractors that just finished putting the storm drain pipe north of Redlands. They put in storm drain as part of the VA projects and tied to this channel here because there are damaged half of our street. So I will be working with them to pave the rest of the street from curb to curb. And I think it was like 60, 40, where they pay 60%, we pay 40%. And that's, I think it's a good deal for the city. So the pink represent this fiscal year. And then the green, what we budget, what we plan for next fiscal year, we might not get the whole Barton Road, but at least we will get a lot of residential area done. When I'm talking about service seal, we talk about a street that in pretty good condition. But if you have a major crack or illigated crack, we usually grind that surface and overlay and then service seal. So we not just service seal just because, but even in damaged pavement, we do more repair to the surface. And this subdivision here was built in, I think it was 2005. So because it's a brand-new street, it's ready for service seal. But usually you want to do a service seal within seven to 10 years. And being it's a pretty brand-new street, I waited 10 years. So by next year, it's ready, but street is still in very good shape, okay? Some of the area, this area right here, yes, sir.
Are they in good shape because they're so traffic calm that cars can't even get down them? They're so narrow?
Well, because a lot of times if the sun hit it and it's cracked and it's brittle and that's normal. Being a residential street, you don't have a lot of heavy truck traffic going through, that's all.
Can't fit a truck. Can you fit a fire truck? It's pretty tight.
Well, at least we have a trash truck, trash truck can damage the street, the city. Yeah. So again, I will come by every year, present what we plan for that year. But the rest is a guideline and it might not fix... We're going to pave that street in 2019, 2020, but at least you have an idea. So the staff recommend that the city council approve the council bill R-2005-30. And that's it.
He's so bored, he left. Well, if we can muster three votes, we don't need him. Okay, is there any discussion? Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. We have three votes, it's unanimous. It's approved. Okay, number 17, Designating Voting Delegates for League of California Cities Annual Conference. I'm delighted with the performance of Mayor Pro Tem Duper with the League of California Cities.
Yeah, so it's official, I officially... Officially made the vice president of our local chapter with Sam Spagnolo from Rancho being the president. And I actually have something under reports of council members that we probably need to talk about, reference some league stuff.
So you're a natural?
I'll be there with Jarb, with Conrad.
Conrad will be the alternate? Is that okay with you?
Have you already made travel arrangements?
Designating the delegate... We have delegates? We get two delegates or one? But it says on here, delegates and alternates. So are there two of each?
No, one of each.
Oh.
It shouldn't be approval, it should be Conrad and I.
Can we approve this if the notice was incorrect? I thought there was one for each of us. Okay.
Do you want to go to Sacramento?
No.
It's not Sacramento.
It's San Jose. It's where Mr. Manetta was mayor back in the seventies.
I almost wanted to ask him what happened after you left. Because, you know, San Jose is...
Actually, no, it's...
But it's right in the middle of Silicon Valley.
We approved an ordinance, how do you call it? The ordinance that I sponsored, preventing councilmembers from lobbying after leaving. And we actually mimicked San Jose's. And I don't know if he was involved in that process or not.
Well, he was mayor in the seventies, so...
Yeah, I was gonna say it was quite a long time ago.
It would have been the late nineties, I think that did to that.
Yeah, in the late nineties, he was the secretary of commerce, ninth in line to the president.
San Jose was very trend-setting, did a lot of positive things, changed a lot of things in the state here and then...
Apple was born out of there, I'm sure they're a pretty good place.
And they followed San Bernardino.
And then they went bankrupt. I think they led San Bernardino, didn't they?
Yeah, they did.
They were bankrupt before San Bernardino, yeah.
San Jose, I thought it was the other city that went bankrupt, not San Jose.
San Jose went bankrupt too.
I thought it was...
It's San Jose and...
I thought it was Oakland.
No.
No, no.
No, not Oakland.
Stockton.
Stockton. I don't think San Jose went bankrupt. No, 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 no. I think you guys are heavily confused.
They've had a lot of issues though.
Well, look it up and report back to us.
So wrapping up.
You have been placed under arrest. Okay, reports of, I think that's pretty obvious who's going, reports of councilmen?
So tomorrow, we're going to meet with Mike Morell about the transportation bill.
At the state level?
Yeah, well, not, we're going to meet with him in his office for the league, on behalf of the league. And the league is pushing that transportation bill. And I want to know where we stand as a city, do we support it or not?
The federal transportation bill?
The state transportation bill.
Well, what about it? I mean, we have to know where specific.
Okay, what does it say?
Jarb read some of it, I quite honestly didn't have time to read it. But the brief, this is what I was told. It will help fund some of our local transportation-related projects to which we have none really in the queue that we need here. I know a couple of other cities are going to bring some stuff to throw at him to say that they need. However, I was told that it comes with an increased tax bill. So knowing our general stance on those type of things, I wasn't certain that that was something our city supports.
Is it a gas tax or a driving miles tax?
No, this could be a separate tax because we already have a gas tax and Habsinaw Tax for transportation and I'm not sure what else they're going to taxes on.
But they're gonna... What is the form of the tax?
I'm not sure.
Income tax, property tax?
If it would extend the SBX down by the mayor's house, I'd be on board.
Oh yeah, that's all I need.
Well, before, I mean, if it involves a tax, I can tell you that I would not be in favor of it. But otherwise, I'm always in favor of trying to get more transportation funds.
I doubt I will go home and do any reading because I'm about falling asleep right now. But in the morning, before we go over there, I'll take a look at it. But I just want to kind of get a general feeling of where we stand. Jarb, do you have any recommendations on?
I agree with Councilman Papescu. If it was just using the current funding that we have for transportation, I'm all for it. And using the current tax that we have, I'm all for it. But for additional taxes, I don't think so.
But for additional taxes, I think so.
And Laura and I talked about it on the phone briefly today. She said she understands that we're a different type of city that has got a balanced budget, that does well with our projects, that doesn't necessarily need some of the stuff the other cities do. So we're not always, they don't expect us to jump on the bandwagon. And that's, that's okay.
You know, it's interesting. I mean, clearly, and sadly, politicians always jump on events. But after the bridge collapsed on the I-10, I think I saw an article that says that California has one of the worst road systems in the state.
In the country, please.
Sadly, sadly, when you look at priorities for budgets, who, who really speaks on behalf of the roads? There is no constituency, you know, Caltrans maintains them, but they're not going out there saying, "We need more money for", you know, versus everyone else has lobbyists and all sorts of people making sure that they get their fair share. So clearly, we could definitely spend more money on infrastructure. I know there's money up there. We just have to prioritize differently. But that's a whole different issue.
All right. I'll report back on what happens next meeting.
I'd like to see us divert about $300 billion from the train to nowhere to paving every street in Loma Linda with diamonds. Okay. Any reports of officers? Okay, there's a report about Quaid charity event.
Okay. You asked for a brief update on the Quaid Open House, Lollapalooza, whatever they had on June 27th for their hot rod show and charity event. They said that was going to be their once-only occasional event. The event on the 27th, we had one sheriff's officer there with no activity, no event. I mean, nothing that stood out. It was just a bunch of people there. They actually had fairly good sales, and it was a success. And actually, on July 17th, they had a second event. The exact same conditions, exact same requirements. So we had two one-of events with, with nothing that, that happened.
Do we have any data on how many people attended?
It was a fairly large, how many people were there, Steve?
The officer said the last one was about 300 people.
Wow, very good.
No issues.
Fairly large turnout. They, they have been expressed an interest to do more of these one-of events. So I think what we'd like to do, just from a staff perspective, is, you know, limit that to something like once a month or once every six weeks, so we're not doing this every weekend. But they've been, they've been very receptive to having law enforcement there as part of this.
As far as the law enforcement, is it someone who's already on duty and they're just kind of spending more time there? Or are you adding an additional officer for that event?
They're paying an overtime position.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, that officer is committed to the event. So from a staff perspective, we, we don't have a problem with letting them continue with what they're doing as long as there's some reasonable limit on the frequency.
Okay, thank you for that report.
Thank you.
You got some information on where the taxes are coming from for that?
It's a, it's a fuel tax. And it's a $100 a year registration on zero emission vehicles. So they got to figure out a way to.
Because they don't buy any fuel.
The electric vehicles. So that gets taxed on your registration. But the last one is paid for.
So it's taxing all the fat cats in their Teslas?
Additional gas tax, additional license fee for vehicles?
Yeah, they were just, the license fee only is for zero.
Thirty-five. No, no, no. A hundred for, a hundred for, for zero. Thirty-five for none.
Oh, really? So what was the total amount they planned to raise from all this?
Sounds like about a billion dollars.
I don't, I don't see a number here.
I'm sure it's several billion. Okay. Well, it goes back to, oh.
I'm not a favorite personally, so.
Yeah, I'm opposed to it. As long as Jerry Brown is spending a dime on that train, I'm not opposed, I'm opposed to all tax increases because it provides him cover. Yes, the city council is adjourned. We'll go to the successor agency. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Would the public like to speak on any items not on the agenda? Seeing no public consent calendar. Oh, there is public. There he is. Okay, there's a motion, a second. Are there, is there any discussion? Those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Yeah, I'm used to over there. Okay, so the ayes have it. We're adjourned. We go to the housing authority. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
Mayor, we may want to address the closed session.
Well, I can do it in any order I like. That's the mayor's power.
You know you're forgot.
Okay, closed session report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regarding the closed session, item C, that was a conference with real property negotiator with the parties listed on the agenda. There was no final action report, merely direction given to the negotiators.
Thank you for that concise report. Would the public like to speak on any items not on the agenda?
No, sir.
Okay, consent calendar. Okay, discussion. Those opposed, say no. Approved, say yes. Yes?
Yes.
So he went for yes. I got away from the ayes. Okay, so that one is approved unanimously. Chair and member reports? Yeah, C. Say C. No reports, reports officers. Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you for coming, and thank you for putting up with our dilatory tactics.
What's our next meeting?
Yes.
When is our next meeting?
Our next meeting is, is it late August? It's late August, so, yeah.
Thank you.